...being involved and being plugged in, it's really what makes their city great. We're just citizens, and that's something that I think people forget sometimes when we're aldermen or we put on a mayor's hat. It's like, look, I still just live down the street. I still, you know, walk my kids to the park. It's like, we're citizens. It's a citizen-run organization. And Pete has just been so dynamic, is truly a person that cares for the community. And I've always loved being able to go to, if we had to go to Springfield for something, or if there was a function that had to be gone to that was in an official capacity, it was always great to have Pete there, because Pete knows everybody. And wherever you go, it's like, hey, it's Pete Colerelli. And so, he'd always introducing me to everyone, which was great. And so, I always appreciated, always appreciated his service and his well-thought-out ideas, and also his ability to change his mind as well. It's like, you know, if he feels like something was, is on one side of an issue, and then he saw a different point of view, you know, he had the intellectual honesty and capacity to see things different. And that's very important. And so, I just want to personally thank you, Pete, for all your time here at City. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody, especially in the first ward, for electing me. It was, you know, if you've never served in office before, it's a blessing. It adds so much more to your life than you have to sacrifice to do it. And that's what I gained. I mean, as we hinted at just a minute ago, my first involvement with the city of Lockport was as a police officer. And that's when I really got to know and love the city, because I got to know and love the residents. And I taught in the schools, got to know the young people, ended up working in the high school, so I got to know the youth in the high school. And that is, that's what makes a community, is the people. And so, my close contact and relationships with the people is what really drove the love for this city in me. And, you know, my parents, who are here today, Barb and Pete, they inspired in me from a young age a desire to serve. And it's part of my personality too, but they certainly made sure that that was rooted deep within me. And so, I did that as a police officer, and when I left the department, I felt inspired to do something here at city council. So, I just, and I've loved it, every minute of it. And I wanted to thank all the residents again. I want to thank the staff that I've worked with over the years. I mean, that's how this city is run. It's how any community is run, but in particular here, we were going through a growth spurt. We're learning as we go, and we've had an incredible staff. I've had incredible staff working with the city council over the years. And this team that we have here, there may not be another in the state that can match it. I mean, it's really that good. And you never hear about it, you never see it. They don't get the centerfold paper, newspaper articles, but they're the ones doing all the work behind the scenes. And so, they deserve a lot of credit for that. And I was honored to serve for them. But then, I'd also like to thank the council members that I've served with over the years. And, you know, there's a great, it's just, it's such a great moment right now. And I'm sad to leave, but I'm so happy, because I'm so excited to see this team get to work. And they are just so dynamic. And you look at them, and if you know anything about them, they're very diverse. They have diversity of backgrounds and diversity of expertise. And so, I know they're going to bring that to the city and really move us forward in a rapid direction. They are here, and they're going to set our community apart, and make it just a great place to live and work and raise our families. And so, I'm honored to serve with all of you, especially my good friend Brian Smith, who I probably will miss most of all. I feel like I'm Dorothy at The Wizard of Oz, who I'll miss the most of all, Cowardly Lion or Tin Man. And because Brian and I served on the police department together, and so, that means a lot to me. But also, I'd like to thank the mayors. I served under three mayors. Tim Murphy, who introduced me to Lockport politics when I was still a police officer, and helped me to understand what, you know, driving a community forward in a professional way, and making sure that the supporting staff is strong. He did that for me. And then, of course, Dev Trevetti, who I have a strong soft spot in my heart for. He was a quiet leader who dealt with a lot of adversity in a very professional and humane way. And then, of course, my hero, Steve Strite. He doesn't want to hear this, but I'm going to say it anyway.
There's a five-minute time, please.
Sorry. That was never passed, as an ordinance. Anyway, but Steve, Steve Strite, if you don't know him, this man is a perfect man for our community right now, because at his core, he loves his wife, he loves his children, he loves his community, and he loves his God. And so, we can't have a better man leading our city right now. And it's so important, even at the local level. People don't think about that, just how important local leadership is. But if you don't have a faith community, you've lost it. We have a faith community right now. We have a faith community driven by this mayor, driven by the fine men and women who are up here on this council. And while I'm sad to leave, I'm excited, and I will be back to complain at this podium at future meetings, I hope. And I wish everyone the best of luck, and just continue to seek the good, the true, and the beautiful. And our community will be fine. And I'm here as a resource. So, if you ever need me for anything, to help, to volunteer, I'm happy to step up and help out in any way that I can to accomplish your mission. So, thank you.
All right, Pete, thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, add a few words too.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. I just have a few words about Peter. You know, when you talk about Peter, you don't know where to start. There's so many good avenues that branch off when you say the word Peter Colerelli. It's just amazing. First of all, I'll go back. Pete talked about being auxiliary officer. I started as a capacity of auxiliary officer, and Pete was an officer, a new officer. And he asked me a question one time. And, you know, if you know Pete, when he talks to you, you gravitate to him. You could just feel his passion, whatever he does. And he's just the person that you want to talk to about anything in life, because he's got some experience, or he knows somebody. So, again, Pete is just an awesome guy. So, and again, like I said, if you know him, you know exactly what I mean. So, again, I just want to talk a little bit about Pete. Again, he is such a well-prepared person for the city council. I know sometimes I've been working a lot of hours or something. I could call Pete real quick and say, hey, Pete, you know, give me a little thought on, you know, maybe reading some of the things, some points that I need to go look at. So, I mean, and he was always there for that. He was such a dedicated public servant. You can call him anytime. He would be there, answer any questions as fast as he could. That's just Peter, how he is. Again, he is such an asset to this council. Most definitely, he is going to be, he is going to be missed. Again, it was just an honor working with him on this council. Again, he is a great friend and will be truly missed. I wish him and his family all the best in the future.
All right. Great. Thanks again, ma'am.
You betcha. And by the way, one last thing.
Oh, my gosh, he never stops.
I'm sorry. I'm going to filibuster. Jim Petracos, who's going to be sitting in this seat, the first ward, besides Chris Capitano, can't have a better man sitting in this seat. And I'm so proud to hand the chair over to Jim, who is a man of integrity, another good family man. He is passionate about the city. If you were around him when he was campaigning, I know Debbie knows this all too well, that he is really fired up about what he's about to encounter. And so, I'm really excited about that. And the last thing I'm going to say, before I depart, is I can't, of course, my number-one partner is my wife, Angela, and my 10 kids. And so, I'd like to, if she's watching, I don't know, she's probably changing a diaper, if she's watching at home, to thank her for being that strong support for me, and to my children. And I hope, you know, that's really what inspired me most of all, is what I'm leaving behind for my children. So, to Angela, I love you, and I'm coming home, and I'll be home a lot more now. Is that it? Do I walk out now, or what's the protocol?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so. All right, definitely be missed. But now, we've got some new folks to bring on board, so we're going to do our swearing-in of the newly-elected officials. I'm very excited now to be serving with Jim, JR, Joanne, and we also have Jason back again as well. So, very excited about having a council that wants to see things move forward and continue the momentum we have. And so, Alice, do we hand this over to you now?
Yes. We could have all the candidates come by the podium. First of all, congratulations to all of you. I haven't had the honor of meeting you, JR, but congratulations. And I've worked with Jason, and have seen you quite a bit through the audience, both of you, so congratulations. I will go ahead and read, and we'll do it all at one time, the old. So, when I ask for your name, you can just cite your name, okay? Raise your right hand. Having been elected, you could repeat after me.
Having been elected.
To the office of alderman.
To the office of alderman.
In the city of Lockport, Illinois.
In the city of Lockport, Illinois.
In the county of Will.
In the county of Will.
Before said, do solemnly swear.
Before said, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I'm sorry. And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Ward one, two, three. Go ahead.
Faithfully discharge.
Charge duties of the office of Ward. Okay. And you can, according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay. It's official.
All right. You know, if you guys want, we'll just take a few minutes. The family's here. If you guys want to take pictures up here, just, please, just take a few minutes, and we'll do that. So, I know some of your spouses are out there. So, if anybody wants to do that, please, by all means. So, we're going to take five minutes, folks.
Yes, we can let him change diapers now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Corretta.
Bob.
Good. Chris, how you doing?
Good. Good to see you.
Oh, these guys, all right.
All right, everybody. You ready to rock and roll?
Where's that gavel at?
Yeah, banging my gavel. I've got my sister making me one. She's a wood turner. Yeah, I want to.
Steampunked out.
Does that feel good?
I know. Open those windows, man. Like the old days. Let's go, Petracos. This isn't no Holiday Hotel.
So, you know, Darren decided that the new council member.
I didn't get taught on how to do that.
Yeah. It's difficult.
Yeah.
But I think we could work our way through it.
Poggi di ciao, let's go. Lisa, Pam. Hi, guys.
This is. You actually have some meeting minutes? So, this is what you do with it. You make like a line, you put the date, and then you initial it.
Mr. Bartleson getting the perfect shot there. We're going to do a new roll call, so we'll hear some new names up here.
I don't know what happened. Like, he wants to switch folders on me, because it goes from like December 14 to.
All right, Alice, run us through the new roll call, please.
Yes. Alderman Petracos.
Yes. Here.
Yes, I'm here.
I caught it in class. I caught it in class already.
Alderman Capitano.
Here.
Gil Ogley.
Gil Ogley.
Gil Ogley. Gil Ogley.
We'll practice.
I'm here.
And you're here. Thank you.
Don't feel bad. People still call me straight.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Vandemir.
There's a joke in there. Here. Deskin.
And Alderman Zaskin.
Here.
Alderman Peretta.
Here.
And Alderwoman Bartelson.
Here.
A present.
All right, fantastic. Tom, do you want to mention something about the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we'll be having a Board of Local Improvements public hearing. If it's okay with you, we can defer that until the city attorneys report. And we have two action items regarding that project, and we can take them both at the same time.
All right, sounds good. All right, next, we're going to do a consent agenda. Can I have a motion to have a consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Vandemir.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Bartleson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so on our regular, on our consent agenda, we have the regular city council meeting minutes from April 15th. We have the committee meeting minutes from April 15th. We have the payroll. We also have approval of bills. There's surplus property, Resolution 15035. There's Resolution 15032, which was an intergovernmental agreement. And then, we had the Give Something Back Foundation proclamation. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Alderman Vandemir.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Petracos. Did you want to abstain from this?
I need to abstain from number five.
Okay.
I too, all of them except number five.
Okay. Alderman Gilogli's, your company is involved in one of the bills or something? So, okay. Our company works for. All right, so for the rest of us, can I have a motion to approve, or a vote to approve then?
Make a motion?
Yeah. Well, the motion was made. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. All right, so, approval of meetings. All right, so let's move on. Ben, what do you got?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. We have a memo before you tonight in regards to the reappointment of various committees. We'll be seeking a motion to appoint Joanne Bartleson to the Board of Local Improvements, and a motion to appoint Darren Deskin to the Safety Committee for the Police Department. I would just like to mention that this in no way has any correlation in regards to the committees or liaison plan that you had discussed before. These are just some housekeeping committees that were part of the history of Lockport's council, and we just wanted to make sure we had up-to-date names on those lists.
All right, sounds good. So, can I have a motion to appoint Joanne Bartleson to the Board of Local Improvements?
I'll make a motion.
JR?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Vandemir. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, I need a motion to appoint Darren Deskin to the Safety Committee for the Police Department.
I'll make a motion.
JR on it again?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Bartleson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chief, you want to talk about the next one?
Sure. Mayor, council members, we have a citizen who has expressed his interest in becoming an auxiliary officer. And an auxiliary officer is an unpaid volunteer that assists officers at times when needed. The position actually requires the auxiliary officer to do certain things by law. There are certain things they can do, certain things they can't do. But the person is Mr. Bruce Hilton, who's right here today. The Police Department has done the appropriate background check, and it is my pleasure to recommend that he be appointed by you, Mayor, and approved by the city council.
Sure. Can I have a motion to appoint Bruce Hilton as an auxiliary officer?
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Vandemir. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, I'll come down, and we'll swear him in.
We also have Jerry Lotion, the head of the auxiliary, and Bob Tagg, one of the officers are going to come up along with his family. You can come on him. You can take a picture.
All righty. Bruce, thanks for your willingness to serve. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
We use the auxiliary service often, and so, we thank you for that opportunity to have you here. All right, so, raise your right hand, please. I, Bruce Hilton.
I, Bruce Hilton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of office of auxiliary police officer for the city of Lockport.
Of office of auxiliary police officer for the city of Lockport.
Police Department to the best of my ability.
To the Police Department to the best of my ability.
All right. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Appreciate you. All right, do I get to pin it on him? We'll save your chest.
Thank you very much.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right. Move on down to, Ben, what do you got under CA 1?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the city council approved a succession plan back in May, Resolution 14032. In the event that the mayor was temporarily unable to perform the duties as the chairperson for this meeting, that we would have a rotating schedule provided with the council persons. In the past, we had done that by name, and obviously, when elections happen, we need to reappoint those matters. But we've actually proposed to change the rotation schedule a little bit by basing it by ward and seniority. And the system will first go through each ward as senior alderman, and then repeat back through order as a junior alderman. We decided to start this with the fourth ward, because with the last, by alphabetical, with the last policy, Alderman Peretta was next in line, so we just thought we would just start him as the senior alderman for, and then have the succession follow the course that we projected here through, and this will take us through 2017. So, I'm just seeking for a motion to approve this at tonight's meeting.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Vandemir?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Gilogli. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty.
All right, thank you. I did also have a verbal update this evening for you in regards to the lights here. The pass, and the room is not completed yet. You've obviously noticed some of the decorations, the carpets in, some of the wood paneling. The blinds are not in yet, but I think it kind of helps make it feel open, and obviously, we'll have to address that light. But we'll make sure we get the room finished up before the next meeting. My verbal update tonight is in regards to the discussion. We had a conversation at the last meeting about the right-of-way with the, behind the Corwin's Center. I had a discussion with the fire chief. There was an article in the Lockport Legend. I just felt there was a little confusion. I just want to make a public comment that what the council did vote to approve on, in clarification, was to give the petitioner 180 days from the completion of the water line that we're putting in behind the building to tap into the water system for the sprinkler to be installed. So, I would guess that that'll be completed later this summer, and that they would need to get that sprinkler connection done before the end of the year. So, it was not, I think that there was a confusion that, as the petitioner requested, that he didn't have to connect to the sprinkler until he found a tenant. But that's not what the council approved. Okay?
I'm sorry. So, I believe you're saying that I months, is that sound right? Is that what you're doing?
About, yeah. I mean, well, within 180 days from us completing the project. And we will be done with the project in, I don't know, I mean, the next 30, 60 days or less.
And that information is passed on to him, is that correct?
Yes. Yes. And then, we also have a request, executive session for 2C5 land acquisition. And I would recommend, with the meeting being transposed this evening, that we would recess for executive session to be completed after the committee, the whole. If it's okay with everybody.
That sounds good. Okay. All right. Tom, what do you got?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, first item is the project at Illinois 7 and Thornton Street. If you've been by there, you've seen that there's been a lot of progress made. What's before you this evening is the pay estimate number four for deconstruction in the amount of $164,894.55. Because this project was run as a special assessment, which means adjoining property owners would be contributing to the cost of the project, the Board of Local Improvements is required to review the pay estimate and approve it first, and then refer it to the city council. What we are proposing to do this evening is have a meeting within the meeting, and have the Board of Local Improvements convene a meeting, open it up for any conversation or questions that people may have regarding the proposed pay estimate, and then vote to recommend its approval to the city council, close the Board of Local Improvements meeting, and then have the city council vote on the pay, the pay estimate. I hope I haven't confused you, but what I would recommend we do now is have the Board of Local Improvements convene its meeting, and if the city clerk could call the role for the Board of Local Improvements, including the newly-appointed member of the board.
So, we will go into local improvements at 7:34 PM. Alderman Petracos?
Here.
Alderman Capitano?
Here.
Actually, just for the Board of Local Improvements.
Just our board members. It's just going to be Joanne, and Darren, and myself.
Okay.
Sorry. That's the board.
All right, so Alderman Bartleson? Yes, here. Joanne.
Deskin. Alderman Deskin.
Alderman Deskin.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here.
Okay, we'll show that all three members of the Board of Local Improvements are present. The staff's recommendation is the approval of pay estimate number four for deconstruction in the amount of $164,894.55. The staff is recommending a motion to approve pay estimate number four.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You in favor?
Aye.
All right, three ayes. All right, unanimous.
And, Mr. Mayor, we'll close the Board of Local Improvements committee meeting, and then have that same matter referred to the full city council. Staff is recommending approval of the same, the same pay estimate, and recommending the same motion be made.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Tom. Sorry, new folks. It's one of those bizarre things that we do on occasion. It'll make more sense as you go along. All right, so, then, Amy, you want to take it? You want to speak to this next part, AT 2? Or Ben, do you want to do that?
Yeah, it's basically the same motion. We're looking for.
You just want me to make the motion, and, okay. So, can I have a motion then to approve AT 2, which is the motion that we just talked about here in the Board of Local Improvements?
To approve a pay estimate number four for deconstruction in the amount of $164,894.55 for the only Route 7 Thornton Street special improvement.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Alderman Gilogli, anyone second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Vandemir. We'll have a roll call on that.
I have a question real quick.
Yes, yes.
Is this the fourth and final payment to Robinson, or is there one? Because I was looking at the math, and it looked like they've been.
Amy can answer that. I'm not sure.
Is this the final payment to Robinson on this?
This payment is not for Robinson. It's to deconstruction.
Oh, deconstruction? Okay.
And no, there's still outstanding work that needs to be done, so there will be additional pay estimates after this one.
Okay. My apologies. Thanks.
Now, by the way, if anybody's wondering why the sidewalks weren't going in, and we saw that the grass rolls were undone, that was my question. Amy says it's because that's being funded through a grant program that's separate from this. So, it's, in case anyone's wondering, because I was, so. But that will be done here as we get the grant come in. All right, so can I, any other questions then? Good. Can I have a roll call then for this? Alice?
Petracos?
Yes.
Capitano?
Yes.
Gilogley?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vandemir?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Peretta?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you much. All right, so we're going to jump down to liquor licenses.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item involves a carryover from the RDA, the redevelopment agreement for the Vols Building, that was approved by the city council in December of 2014. Part of the project includes the issuance of a liquor license for the restaurant operation that is under construction now, and that will be opening later in the summer. The city of Lockport has an ordinance that imposes a numerical cap, or numerical limitation, on the number of liquor licenses for any particular class of liquor license. Part of our obligation of the redevelopment agreement is to, if there isn't a liquor license available, to amend the ordinance and add one more license that would be available. The liquor licensee will still have to go through the traditional liquor license application process, which is underway now in anticipation of opening in June. What's before you this evening, though, is the ordinance that amends the liquor code that creates an additional license, so there will be one available for the mayor to issue should the liquor license applicant qualify for a license. Staff's recommendation is for approving the motion, approving the ordinance before. is for approving the motion, approving the ordinance before you that would create the additional license.
All right, can I have a motion to pass?
I'll second.
I think, did you say yes, Jim?
Yes.
Jim said yes, seconded by Alderman Vandemir. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, did you want to table AT 4?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, some of you may remember that we had several residents close to the ML Realty Partners Development in attendance at the last meeting. We had indicated to them that we'd be making ourselves available for a meeting with ML so they can get their questions answered by the developer and the developer's engineer. That meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday at 4:00 PM, so our recommendation is to let that meeting occur first, bring this matter back to you at the next meeting on May 20th. Staff's recommendation is to table the amendment of the recapture agreement until May 20th.
All right, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
All right, Deskin?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Vandemir?
Peretta.
Okay, all, Peretta, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, Amy?
Okay, my first item on the agenda tonight is the 2015 downtown vault filling and sidewalk replacement project. If you recall, like last year or a year before last, we did a vault study, and we looked at all the vaults in the downtown that needed to be filled, and quantified them, and put cost estimates together as to how much they were going to cost. When we found out about the Illinois 7 project that IDOT, Illinois 7, Illinois 171 intersection project that IDOT was going to do, we talked to them about getting a good portion of those vaults filled as part of that project, and they agreed. This left, I believe, three or four vaults that still needed to be filled, so we talked to V3 Engineering about putting a project together to get the remainder of the vaults filled in this year's construction season. We received two bids for the project, or, yeah, for the project, and the lowest bid was received from R&amp;R Contractors from Morris, Illinois, in the amount of $125,355. This was over the estimate, and much over our budgeted item. However, in speaking with the engineer that put the plans together from V3, it was his opinion that we could throw the bids out and rebid them, but we probably wouldn't get much better prices than what we got. So our recommendation is that a contract be awarded to R&amp;R Contractors from Morris, Illinois, in the amount of $125,355.
And Mayor, if I can chime in a little bit here, this, if you recall, during the 2017 IDOT plan, they'll be paying, in that project, IDOT will cover the cost to fill a lot of the vaults between 9th and 10th. These are the ones outside of that, so we needed to kind of sew this up so that we won't have any vault problems in the future.
Can you just tell us where these vaults are, Amy, just quickly?
Uh, I don't know that I have the list.
There's, um-
Addresses are on there.
So they're on the, kind of the side streets, right, like around the corners kind of thing? Like on the sides of buildings?
It's mostly on State Street. I think there may be one that goes around a corner by, you know-
There are 1,000 and 1,004 State Street, 1,011 and 1,015 State Street, and 1,100 State Street.
Okay, I see, so they're John Gray's Building and beyond, south, okay, I gotcha.
They're outside of the scope of the IDOT project, but we wanted to get everything-
No, that makes sense, I get it.
Same time.
All right. And, all right, well, let me make a motion to pass. Have a motion, anyone?
I'll make the motion.
Anyone? Alderman, and by the way, for you new guys, if you're thinking like, I got something to say-
Say it.
You say it after we make the motion to pass, then you can say everything you want to say. When I first got here, I was totally confused. I'm like, I don't want to pass it yet. So, it's just the way you do it. So, a motion to approve, and it was, Alderman Vandemir?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Capadona. Any discussion?
Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes.
Amy had said that we were, it was over budgeted. So where does the funds come from then, if that's the, you know, case, that, you know, you didn't budget enough, or you went over budget?
Well, the general fund, you know, funds all of these projects, the road projects, the sidewalk project. So we have money in the general fund for other projects, or, you know, for other things, and so it would come from the general fund, it would just, and then we also have money in the sidewalk program this year. We generally budget $100,000 in our sidewalk program every year. $80,000 of that is for service requests that comes in for repair of sidewalks, and then $20,000 of that is for ADA improvements. One thing that we could do to make up some of the shortfall is eliminate the ADA improvements planned for this year in favor of adding the additional funds to this project to make sure that we get our vaults filled in those areas, because some of those are ADA improvements, and will help facilitate that in the downtown. So we could actually use that $20,000 that we had planned for ADA improvements to make up some of that shortfall.
And that won't hurt us, then, when we need that, those funds for the ADA?
No, we could just not do ADA improvements in the sidewalk program this year.
Well, we didn't generally do pretty good. Usually we come in under budget with many projects, so it'll probably get made up in another spot as well.
Right.
We are watching those projects as they're coming in and out through the year pretty closely, just to make sure that at the end of the year, we're not over, and if we do go over, we'll do a budget amendment-
Okay.
-to take care of that, because we do have some reserves set aside for our six-year capital plan, so if some things come over and under, hopefully in total, they'll wash out.
We do have some other projects that will come up for discussion tonight, too, that are over budget, and what the City Council will have to decide at the end of the year is if we want to cut a project to make up that shortfall, or do a budget amendment, and do all the projects that were planned for the year.
Great, thank you.
All right. Can I have a roll call then, for a vote?
Petracos?
Yes.
Capadona?
Yes.
Galogli?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vandemir?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Peretta?
Yes.
Bartleson?
Yes.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Hey, one thing I wanted to mention before we went on to the next item, is since 2008, Amy Wagner, engineer, has done a lot of grant writing, and according to this piece of paper Ben gave me, she's brought in over $15,575,000 in grants. So, yeah, bravo. They're not easy, they're not fun to do, and Amy's excellent at it, and we're really blessed to have you here, so thank you, Amy. We'll have to get some kind of, I mentioned this before, but, Jack, let's get her a medal made.
(laughing).
All right, Amy, what else you got?
Okay, my next item on the agenda is the 2015 Summit and Runyon Reconstruction Project. On April 22nd, we had the bid opening for this project. There were five bids submitted, and the lowest bid was received from Austin Tyler Construction in the amount of $1,238,060.13. This low bid was significantly higher than the budgeted amount. The alternate bid prices are, on the paperwork, are for optional services, which would replace potentially higher-cost alternatives within the scope of the base bid, therefore, the alternate amount would not be added to the awarded cost. This bid amount is about 30% over what we had budgeted for this project. However, our recommendation is still that a contract be awarded to Austin Tyler Construction in the amount of $1,238,060.13. And part of the reason this was over the budgeted amount was when we put together the budgeted amount for this project, we do all those estimates, those, they're very rough estimates based on square yardage of pavement and linear feet of water main. There was additional water main added, this project that we didn't originally intend on putting in, and there was some undercuts based on some of the soil borings that were done, and the pavement cores that were done that we added in to make sure that we had enough in there to take care of the project.
Okay.
Mayor, and if I could add, you know, for some of the new aldermen, the capital improvement plan that was approved was designed to be flexible, so we always kind of sold this document and list of projects as, if funding is available and costs come in or go out, that we would push projects back or pull projects up depending on funding. And so it was a six-year capital improvement plan established on utilizing reserves and existing revenues, and so we're staying on that plan. It's just that as projects, you know, end up being more expensive than anticipated, you know, we will either delay some others later and pull other ones up if there's savings in other locations or new revenues.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion approved?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Vandemir, seconded by-
I'll second.
Alderwoman Bartleson?
Mayor, I need to abstain on deliberations and the vote on this. The company I work for is interested in supplying material on this project, so I just wanted you to know that.
Noted.
I have a question for Lisa. Are we okay? Are you okay with this overage?
Yes, I am following up very closely and updating our numbers to see if we can keep going, but yes, I mean, it is an important project.
Good enough.
Do you have a second?
Uh, yeah, we're good.
I have one question, too.
Yeah, please.
Amy, do you have a timeframe for the start of this?
Uh, yeah.
Estimate.
Well, it'll take about 15 days to get the contracts executed, and then generally another 15 days after that to get lick materials ordered, and the pre-construction meeting over with and stuff, so I'm anticipating around the first week of June that-
This would be kind of, be started first week of June?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks. And then time period, three months, what do you think?
All of June, all of July, all of August, probably some of September. It's a pretty big project.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a roll call?
Petracos?
Yes.
Capadona?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Vandemir?
Yes.
Deskin?
Yes.
Peretta?
Yes.
Bartleson?
Yes.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Mr. Finley?
Thank you, Mayor. Under Public Works 1, we're looking for a motion to pass Resolution Number 15-039, which is a resolution authorizing the city administrator and staff to contract CCRA to implement the city's RPZ and cross-connection program as well as a water survey. Our RPZ program needed to be updated to meet the IEP guidelines as a result of our last water inspection. The IEP also requires a water survey every three to five years to assure that we have a safe, potable, public water supply with no cross-connections. Staff interviewed two firms to undertake these responsibilities on behalf of the city. After reviewing both presentations, we feel that CCRA offers a better service at lower cost. Tom Mack from CCRA is here today to give a presentation on their services. Staff would request authorization to award CCRA the contract presentation to proceed with implementing the city's RPZ program as well as a water survey. And then we have approximately 800 RPZs in the city. Talked to many of you that had questions this week. Hopefully, we answered all of them, but I think all the questions will come if you let Tom give his presentation. I think many of those will be answered during the presentation. So, Tom Mack from CCRA.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I have two, this presentation is two-pronged. It, for about five minutes, it covers law. Does everybody understand how the law works, and what's required by the municipalities throughout the state of Illinois, and what they're, what they have to meet? Joe hit, touched on it basically. It's been around for years. It was implemented in the state of Illinois in 1985. It became law in Illinois in 1985. In 1995, it was signed in as called the Safe Water Act of 1995, federally. Every state has to do it. Our program's designed to handle every state. It takes care of the state of Illinois. Basically, it, you have an obligation, or really, the law tells you you have to do that. Joe mentioned about surveying. You have to serve, you have to survey every water connection every two years for potential cross-contamination hookups or risks. That means residentially and commercially. You have to, every year, make sure that all protective devices, called RPZs, double-check, there's many of them. Incidentally, I'm a licensed inspector for over 30 years. I've been a licensed plumber for over 40 years. I also teach municipalities continuous education on good cross-connection control protection. Basically, what happens here is, it's an unmandated regulation, which means you carry the burden of the cost. So you have to do this, it's by law, and you have to figure out how to do that. That's where we came into play. I'm the designer of this program. We have an IT department. They put together all the software. The only way legitimately you could do a really effective job with it is the use of computers and the internet. We're a green outfit. We do everything online, but we are transitional and paper-friendly. So when we come into a community, you probably have been doing some surveying in the past by paper. We're friendly to that. But the goal is to eventually have your residents take their surveys. It's about a three-and-a-half-minute survey. When we did a demonstration for Joe, we have a, tonight, we're going to show you an actual working program called, the name of the town is called Pleasantville. And it's an actually online program, it's in action right now. We're not going to go through the whole procedures of entering in surveys and things because time restraints, we didn't want to hold you up too long here. But we'll get you the idea how this whole thing works. You have to survey, you have to have a, you have to have an ordinance in place. We don't know what your ordinance looks like. We provide a service to make sure it's on track, and it's good for the city. We'll make recommendations to the city. We do not make decisions for the city on anything. I mean, if there's an issue with a resin or something, we just bring it to you. It's your city, you decide what you want to do. So the bottom line, too, is you got to survey, you've got to have an ordinance in place, you have to track your RPZs. And here's the big one. This is the one that's hurting everybody all over. It's been around for 30-some years, education. We have to educate the public about what this is all about, and this is where you really get a knockdown in compliance. People, you'll hear everything from, this is a scam, this is just a way people get in our pockets, this is another way of taxing, you know, you hear it all. But the bottom line to it is, what this whole thing, this cross-connection control program, is, is insurance. There's two [inaudible] insurance in this country. There's the one that pays after the incident, and there are ones that prevent the incident. What our program does is it makes you extremely effective to be able to see where, what's going on with your water connections, and it aids in preventing the problem. So, basically, what we're going to do is, we're going to jump over this. Do you have any questions about law?
It's an unfunded mandate, we got to do it.
You have to do it.
Oh, I need to know, right?
Yeah, and the EPA runs around with their little citation books, and I don't know what, I don't get those guys too much, but I'm not supposed to, I guess. But the bottom line to it is, some municipalities, they'll whisper in the ear, some actually get cited. You know, and I'm in the loop on it, and I hear all about it, and I've heard that there's been a whisper in your water departments here about surveying. So, it's kind of important that you, you know, get this thing expedited and moving in the right direction. It's one of those things, it's, what we're proposing is a four-year contract. Just getting people aboard the first year is the most difficult part. We've done the City of Plano, we actually took care of that. They're signing their second, third, three-year contract. They're actually moving to a four-year contract because we changed a few things around. But the bottom line to it is, they went from 5% on their survey to, they're in the middle of their process. My son here, this is Wyatt Mack, he's a college student, northern, studying engineer. He actually works with the City of Plano, and they're on their second notification. They haven't sent it out, and they're up to 30% compliance on their survey, which we think is phenomenal, to be, to move that direction. Our goal is to get it somewhere up into 60, 70%. And that comes from, once they take the survey, they see how easy it is, and, you know, let's face it, today, everybody has iPads, everybody has computers, everybody has iPhones. You can do this thing over that, and it takes about three minutes to take, and it's not a very aggressive survey, but it does tell us what we really need to know, and you'll see a little bit of that today.
So, Tom, every resident has to do this survey?
Every resident, every water connection.
All right. Which is everybody who's got water?
Everybody has water. Basically, everywhere you have a meter, that has to be surveyed, that building, whatever that services.
And then you're going to get this information to take a survey out, how?
Yeah, it's to see how this whole thing works, and how, we, our, the program that we designed is called STEM program. I don't know if you're familiar with STEM. STEM, science, technology, engineering- St, science, technology, engineering and math. This program actually takes the information within milliseconds in real time, will deliver a risk factor for every connection after they take it. So once the data's entered into the computer, the computer does the magic. And then we work off of that. And once again, once we show you how this all works and how the ratings go and how we process it, you'll see how easy it is and why we can do it so cheap. Because that, basically, what the old way of doing it, and I'm sure, I think you've done a couple of surveys, maybe you haven't, but the old way of doing is you send out ten thousand pieces of paper. People take ten thousand check marks and fill it all out, sign it, send it back, and then you get it back. And then somebody's supposed to be reading that and then evaluating it and then coming up with a corrective action for the ones you need. You can imagine what that's like.
All right, so that's fine. So you're going to show us how the survey works?
We're going to show how the survey works. We're going to show you how the tracking works. We're going to show you how, another thing we do was, one of the things in, and it's, when you understand cross-connection control, the EPA springboards off the Illinois State Plumbing Code. There's a, a code or a law in the Illinois Plumbing Code that states that if you have your valves tested by a qualified individual with a calibrated piece of equipment every year and can prove that, that you can't be held liable for cross-contamination. In other words, it's called the Act of God Clause. Okay, so that's, that's the goal here. To be able to prove all that and get that all done. So we're going to go ahead and move in, yeah, sure.
Just for clarification, we have two things going on here. So there's the RPZ program and the water survey for clarification.
What does RPZ mean?
There, there are two separate things.
Revert, reverse zone pressure valve.
We have about eight hundred of those in the city. And again, that's to assure that our, our potable water supply is staying safe. We have about eight hundred of those. But with the two separate things, he'll explain the cost for the RPZ program, which falls entirely on the water customer who had the RPZ. That cost falls entirely on them as it has in the past. The reason we brought it to council right away instead of committee of the whole, these letters previously had gone out, but first notifications went out April first. So we're a little behind. We want to get them out. Tom said to turn around and getting the letters out for the RPZ, which is separate from the water survey, is probably, they're about a week.
And RPZ is really people who have sprinklers or something that they've installed?
Exactly. We have approximately eight hundred. I'll have the department see where we've been updating, where we're at, but we're at approximately eight hundred right now.
Okay.
That includes commercial properties, the RPZ, the backflow.
Yeah, high-risk connections.
Larger commercial is basically where the RPZ would be.
Excuse me, I just wanted to ask you, okay, so the survey that you'd like every person who has a meter hooked up to their property to take the survey, usually it would be nice if everyone had a computer to do that, but what do we do for those residents? Would we have to then determine those that have not done the survey online or whatever, then to send them something in writing? Because there are a lot of people, obviously, that are not computer savvy and may not have a computer to do, you know?
Right. We have some fixes for that. Number one, we make available at the city library.
Okay.
We train people to do it downtown, you know, so maybe somebody in the administration here or something. But we, and we also will mail out paper surveys.
Okay.
And then, it's real simple. They can send it to us by paper and all we do is enter the data.
My concern is that I, we want to make sure that they actually get something so that they can also participate.
Yes. And, you know, that's why we say we're very transitional. We know how to do that. And we know that there's people that can't use a computer. So we know how to do that. The, the goal here is to get it out there and get it moving because the cost saving comes with the people using the computer.
I, I have another question.
Sure.
This discussion seems a little fast-tracked for me, so pardon. So we're hiring you to do this survey, correct?
You're hiring me to run a cross-connection control program in your city.
So it's done, it's done, we're following IEPA guidelines.
Correct.
So if we get audited, that's where your service comes in to help us along with that process.
Basically, I can tell you, the firms that we interviewed and especially CCRA, when they come in, I know when EPA comes in and you see the program, they pretty much look at the program, they see what they have, they say, you're okay.
They move on.
We weren't okay just sending letters out, doing what we were in the past with people sending back their certifications that it was inspected. We, there's more checks in place here to assure that things are being done.
So when they, when the EPA comes us, we just?
We show them the program.
Right. We have what's called an EPA screen. It never goes any farther than that. They look at the screen, it's done.
And you'll, you'll see that screen too when we go through.
We're going to show that to you.
Well, go ahead and, yeah, go ahead.
I think if we, if we show you how this all works.
I still don't understand this.
It'll help a little bit.
You're going to send a survey out, like, is your water cross, yes or no? I mean, I understand. You have to go there and find out. So I'm confused. So I'd love to see what you're going to show me.
Okay, what we're going to do is we're going to, first off, the, the number one thing that we need to do is start educating the, your water users on what, what this is all about. So we have a website. What'll happen if, when you guys sign a contract with us, it will directly link to your homepage will be directly, it'll be Cross-Connection Control Program. We have everything available to your public. They, there's a frequent, frequently asked question for the water cus, customer, custo, that's a water custodian. Go to water customer. And what, what, what that does is it, basically, they'll answer any ninety-five percent of their questions, okay? It's a really good thing. It's an easy read. And basically, it was written by me. It breaks down the law. And it puts it in very understandable terms. Secondly, we offer in the same thing, they can contact us by email. So at any time, any one of your water cus, customer has a question, they'll go up here and they will contact us. And I'm not used to working with your screens. They can contact us and we'll get back to them and answer their questions. So we kind of take it off your, your water department's desks for them. And then last but not least, we're not even opposed to taking phone calls. If they want to go that far, they can call us and we'll talk to them. And we get plenty of calls and it's, it's not a problem for us. So the second thing is the website homepage. It, one of the things we offer here is when you have to test your RPZs, the biggest fallacy or the biggest problem that your water customers has is they have no accessibility to inspectors. They may know one, if they're lucky, you know, or they hearsay somebody from the neighbor. I use this person. What we do is everybody, every inspector that will ha, will be able to test in your town will have to be registered with us. We check their credentials. We make sure that their licenses are paced and their equipments are calibrated before they can test in your town. And then once that is done, they will be put up on, on a list, just like this one, similar to this. These are all registered inspectors with us. And that really helps your residents because what that does is that creates competitive bidding. And you get, there, there's been a lot of fraud going on with this. And, you know, this just alleviates that. I mean, it's just really healthy to know who you're, who's working for you. So these are approved inspectors. Surveying and tracking. Our surveys are online. You take a quick survey. It'll automatically in milliseconds, you deliver to a, to a page. And we'll go up to that real quick. He'll log in real quick. It's, everything that you have in your city is kept on a separate database. We don't have intermingling databases, so you won't have any problems of information getting into the wrong people's and it's protected. Basically, what you're looking at, this is the EPA page, we call it. You can see the, the current status. That's all they look at. They want to see where you're at in compliance with your testing and where you're at with your surveys. They never look past that. Plenty of inspections with the cities that we do. And they just, okay, let's go look at something else. That's basically where you want to be with this, really. So surveying, tracking, we're going to go to the, we'll go up to surveying. This is a, a page where, these are all your water customers, okay? As you can see, we have black, red, yellow. Now, this is a condensed version. Yours will be a lot larger because you have a lot more, but to keep it simple, we keep it condensed. You'll see green. Green, they've taken the survey. They're in a safe position. We just leave them alone. Go down, up a little bit. Yellow, yellow are your RPZs. They've been tested. They're still medium risk, but they've been tested. They're fine. Then we go to what we call, I call that orange. He calls that. I don't know, but I call it orange. Go to the orange ones. Those are the ones that are the RPZs that haven't been tested. So right away, we start moving into a higher risk factor. And then the reds, the reds are people that actually have a situation going on that needs to be addressed. So we can identify them by, by mail to let them know some corrective actions. And it can be anything from a vacuum breaker or an RPZ on a boiler or something like that, and we just get that out to them. Okay, basically, what he'll do is he'll show you an individual response. This is the, this is the overhaul, all of the town. We go over here to view response. That's an individual. This is actually the questions that he asks to answer. This person took, took the survey and answered all the questions correctly for being a zero risk. Everyone is done that way. So we can dial up anybody we need to dial up. For example, dial up a red one. Right away, um.
This is, hold on, this is one that was changed.
Okay.
Looking for one that, okay, this is, this is, this is basically because they didn't, they weren't confirming that their answers were true. Automatically puts them in a red because either they don't want to answer it or they're just lying about something. Either way, I'm, I'm looking for one that hasn't been changed yet.
There we go. The way it's set up, it actually tells us the trouble spot immediately. So it makes it real simple to identify, you know, you don't have to scale it. So you can see how this whole process, I mean, this is, it really, really makes it quick and simple to do an analysis on a, a certain customer on the whole system. One of the, one of the other things are, are STEM tech, and this is where the STEM technology is. The computer automatically does this.
So if I, I can interject, you're essentially asking the resident to be truthful in what they're answering. That is the first red flag. If they actually send something and says, we, we do have a hot tub or it doesn't have a, it's, it's up to them to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
That gives you the red flag. That gives the city the red flag.
Right, right.
That's the premise of the first start of the survey.
Yes, right. So that, basically, that, that puts them in a position that they, you know, it's like anything, every document you ever sign that's got any weight to it is, have you answered the questions truthfully? It's a perjury situation, really. But I don't want, you know, we're not trying to go there, you know, but the bottom line to it, it's important that they do their best to answer the truth. You're really not going to have a lot of, you'll have some problems.
Looking at those questions, I just don't understand, what was the top one? Do you have hot water heat or something in your home?
You have hot water heat other than hot water heater. In other words, do you have hot water radiant heat?
So you would know if somebody's really not telling you the truth?
How are you going to know? Unless you know they got radiators.
No, we wouldn't know if they were telling truth. What, what, they will tell us. And they will tell us they got, yeah, I've got radiators, so I've got hot water heat.
Okay. The thing you got to keep in mind, the thing you got to keep in mind about this is, is when they go through and say that they're going to tell the truth about all the stuff, they don't know what these ratings do. So they, they don't know what puts them in a different category. So, so really, if, if one of them wanted to not say something that was correct, it could put them in a worse category. So they, they're going to, they're going to answer truth. They're, they're most likely they are.
The bottom line to it, when this, when this rolls down, this survey, it's one question at a time.
And that's fine. Like, I'm not, I'm not really, you know, if people are telling the truth or not, we assume we have trustworthy people. But it, my question is this, so everybody gets this. We all fill it out and then if people don't have a hot tub or they don't have, if anybody has a hot tub or something, then they're going to end up being told they need an inspector to come out and inspect these connections or a sprinkler system.
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Tom, if I just may interject here, I think the, the main focus of this program is, one, the survey, but we're focusing on the residents that have a sprinkler system. And we're focusing on the RPZ valve. The RPZ valve is taken off in the fall. The valve is outside the home and if it stayed outside in the wintertime, it will crack because of the coldness. So it has to be taken off. So in the springtime, because I deal with this every single spring or fall, I call my individual that installs the RPZ valve. And he comes in and he installs the RPZ valve. Then that individual calls a certified plumber, who's certified, to do the test of the RPZ valve that it's protecting my water in my home. The main focus of the RPZ valve is to make sure no poisonous or anything that will be harmful to my family inside my home is going backflowing into my house. So I think that's the main focus that we're focusing on. Looking at the survey, I think this is going off on a, on a tangent as far as, you know, do you have a hot tub and all this other stuff? Do I, am I in the right track?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. Like, are those things indicators that everyone, all, all these people are going to have to start hiring inspectors to come to their house? It just seems.
The survey, again, is required by the EPA. It's something we have to have on file for every water customer. Again, I think Alderman's correct. I think there's some confusion between both programs. The survey itself will address every water customer in the city.
Right.
The RPZ program will address those eight hundred or so. And I think some of the questions about the checks in place that we had talked about previously were more so for the RPZ valves. When the, when the plumbers come back with their certification, if they're fudging numbers or doing whatever, it'll show on here. They'll know that, hey, that's not the truth, that, you know, a, a true certification, we'll have to go out and check that. But as for the water customers, again, it's something that we have to have for the EPA. It's something that we have to do. I don't foresee us going back to the houses, telling them they have to change all these. It's just another one of those EPA.
Majority of all these things, majority of, especially residentially, the, probably the worst-case scenario, you have people that don't have vacuum breakers on their soapbox.
Mm-hmm.
And that's an eight-dollar part that can be installed very simply. They can do it themselves.
All right. I have, I have two questions. One, okay, I understand, you know, it's an electronic form. How, how do we get this out to the residents to know that they need to take, take this survey electronically?
Okay, that'll be, there will be links, or they can actually get on the homepage, the city of Lockport's homepage, and there'll be a link right to the website to get it.
It's like one in a hundred people.
Okay, how do we know, how do we make them realize that they need to go to the city of Lockport homepage to get link to do?
We'll send them a notification.
Okay, so you'll send them a mail notification to go and do this? Okay. And the second question is, I mean, yeah, I'm just a dumb attorney. I, I don't understand some of these questions. I, I mean, I'm the most un-technical person when it comes to some of this stuff. But, I mean, I, I don't know how to answer some of these questions. Does a fill, make up water line have a backflow prevention device not installed on it? I have no clue. I mean.
They'll get a big call, again, on the website. Once they get that, they'll get the mail notification. They'll be in contact that they can get. They can either email it, email that question to help with the survey or, again, anything call.
Actually, we know, we know that, the, we know your customers that are, have stopped the survey. So we even know who those are. So we can even get ahold of them via mail and find out if there's a problem.
Okay.
We have approximately ten thousand water.
You know, I, I agree with you. You know, this is, as weird as this thing is, this is what the EPA requires you to do. They want these surveys done.
And they just want to know that there's compliance with the residents doing the surveys. That's all they care about, right?
Now, our past histories with other towns, we don't have that many issues. We really don't. Just to let you know.
So in the whole process and scheme of things, we're privatizing instead of having Public Works and the office taking care of all the paperwork with the survey and administering to make sure that the RPZs are inspecting, we're hiring CCRA.
Right, you're outsourcing.
We're privatizing.
Exactly. And again, for the RPZ program, again, that whole cost is in your package falls upon the water customer. And it's separate from the water survey, which is two dollars per water customer. For them to track the program, do everything, we contact CCRA. They have all the information for the water.
So it costs about twenty grand to do the survey?
It'll be over a two-year period. It can be split and done over a two-year period. There's money in the water budget to do that. There'll be no, no budgetary item outside of what's already funded by the water, water department.
I, I will be managing the account for you.
And not to hold it up, but I apologize, but I, I can see a lot of problems with people getting very confused and, and stopping. If there was another answer of, don't know, I don't know or don't know, I could see more people doing that because some of these questions, they will not know.
The problem with the STEM technology is it doesn't recognize it doesn't know.
Yeah, I understand. But I can see a problem already only because some people will get very confused and, and very frustrated, let's put it that way.
I, I've worked with the city of Plano. They have, we, they've been working on our program for now, it's been four years, when we deal with them. And another thing, going back to regarding your question, is when they go through this, we're going to go through one and there's pictures. So they can see what a device looks like. So it, it really eases, eases it up. And we're about thirty percent in Plano, which equates to about two thousand people taking this survey. And I've had three phone calls about somebody not knowing how to answer something. So it's, it's, it, it's a lot of info. So, it's, it's, it's a lot of information. People, sometimes people, and we've had people that stop, but then they either call us or then they go back on it. Something changes, they go back on it. But the first survey notification, they sent out one survey notification, and now they're at 30%.
It's a lot of work on our part, especially at the beginning with the cities. But as we do this, they get the hang of it, it becomes very simple.
Is this something that has to be done every year? What did you guys say, every two years, okay?
By law.
And so, 30%, right? I mean, not to take away, but that doesn't sound like that great to me, right? If there's a law, you'd think it should be like pretty close to 100. That absolves us, like, we're okay if we would have 30%?
That's one survey notification. That's one notification being sent out.
That's the beginning. That's been probably three months.
Yep, yeah, so really, how it's written is we send out three survey notifications. First notification, which basically means you need to take it. 30 days later, a second one will go out saying, you need to take it, you know, I'll show you a letter if you want, guys want to see it, explaining all the stuff that it needs to be done with it. And then the third survey notification. And now, here's where the city kind of comes into it as a regard, is they make a choice. By state law, after that third survey notification goes out and they don't do it, the water needs to be disconnected by law. But not a lot of cities do that. They don't want to get all the water customers angry at them.
That's what I said when we had.
That's not going to happen here.
No, no, that's why I said when that gets to that point, that's all your decision. We just let you know what status it is.
Exactly, you know, the city of Plano, they were very adamant about, we're not going to show anybody's water off, which is understandable because the last thing you want to do is get your citizens angry at you. All you can do is you just keep sending notifications until they do it. And believe it or not, the municipalities in the state of Illinois, none of them, it's a very rare percentage to get a high percentage. Nobody's getting a high percentage. 30%, you're probably in the top one percentile of the state for the survey at 30%. So, if you get up and you send out your three notifications, you get up into 60, 70, you're blowing every other municipality away. Your water is very safe.
No doubt, this is a progressive-type thing. It gets better and better after you do it. Like I said, you know, I can remember the first survey we did with the city of Plano. We didn't even make 10% after two years. The second time we went through, we got, they, but they didn't send out the notifications they needed to. This time too, they said, let's send out the notifications we need to. And by the time we were done with the first notification, we had 30%. We're probably going to gain maybe 20% on the second notification, maybe 10% on the third notification. We're never going to be at 100%.
All right, well, look, unless there's any other pressing questions, we can wrap this up. I get it. I'm not happy with it. I feel like it's one of those unfunded mandates that, you know what? Springfield, you're going to cut my budget, then stick this in your nose, you know? I'm serious, man. This stuff drives me crazy. But does anybody else have any other questions about it? Do we understand this, what this is about?
How many other competitors do this, doing what you're doing?
There's three major competitors. We're the only one with STEM protection. We're the only one that can do surveys so cheap. They charge $3 per survey.
Okay.
Secondly, we're the only one that has a real-time protective flags in the valve reporting. So, we're probably the number-one company out there right now, so.
All right. All right, so you actually want us to pass this tonight, then, Joe?
Yeah, that's why we brought it straight to council because we're looking for approval. So, we can get the first letters out for the RPZ program. I think we talked more about the survey, but yes, because we need to get the letters out to get those RPZs tested.
We didn't really discuss talk, I mean, cost. I mean, I think it's really important. We did say $2 per water. But the valve cost isn't reflected to the city. How that works is that, and I think we talked on the phone about it briefly. How that works is the inspectors pay the cost to get it online. They may reflect it, but with competitive bidding, we do provide a very good service to the inspectors because it's labor, you know, they walk around with an iPad, they're done. Before, it was three copies, had to mail it, had to do this. It's all gone. And so, every inspector that, in every town, they get a little grumbly at first, but after they use the system, they find out it really does save them a ton of time. And then, we've seen in some of our cities, it went from $100 to $45 per valve because of the competitiveness. So, that's where that cost comes in. There's no cost to the city on that. And secondly, we don't charge the city for any valves that they own. They don't have to pay a fee, and in your schools, you don't have to pay any fees.
And so, this $2 per customer covers postage for your mailings and all that kind of stuff, or is that extra?
The postage and the paper is your responsibilities on the surveying. We handle the first mailing for all the valves, so.
All right.
So, it's the same thing with the valves, notification with the valves. We handle the first one. We send out all 800 or how many valves you have for the notification?
Well, just as an aside, Lisa, is this one of those things, like, I know we're going to talk about this later with the new water bill, the way we send the water bills out in the envelopes, is that a notification we could put in that, by the way, and talk about surveys instead of sending out two postage?
Yes, there's ways of doing it. And I could, did you say you had postcard mailings for you?
Yeah, but we're changing that, so I'm asking Lisa.
If it's a paper, then it's really easy. We can add everything you need to it.
Yeah, that would be great if we could.
We had a lot of water bills drawn.
Right.
That's how a lot of our municipalities do it, is put on a water bill too.
We have newspaper articles, everything ready to go for you guys. All you have to do is, you know, once you approve it, we'll start out by notifying the public what's going on, get them informed, and then eventually, you know, we'll move to, once you get to the paper, then you can really move that information back and forth, so.
All right, you want to have a motion to approve? Did we already motion? I thought these guys just did a presentation.
Yeah, no, we didn't do a motion.
Yeah, so a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Capadona?
Second.
Second by who's that, Jim? Anybody else want to talk about this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, under Public Works Two, I have a motion to approve May 16th Arbor Day in the city of Lockport. These are normally at the beginning of the council packet, and the proclamation is actually supposed to be read by the mayor. I don't know if it's in your packet.
Do you have one?
Do have it.
All right, I'll read it.
It's 2:45.
All right, my friends, a proclamation honoring Arbor Day. Here it comes. Whereas trees provide environmental benefits, including reduced erosion, decreased heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, improve air quality, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees provide a renewable resource benefit by providing paper for our books, wood for our homes, and fire for our house. And whereas trees provide an economic benefit by increasing property value, enhancing the vitality of business areas, and beautifying our community. And whereas tree planting is one of the most important actions that individuals can do to provide healthier environment for future generations, trees, for this reason, form an important link between cultures and people across time. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas the city of Lockport has recently initiated a tree inventory of all public trees to better manage for an expanding and healthy tree canopy, increased tree longevity, and improved public safety. And whereas the city of Lockport continues to increase its urban tree canopy with the intent to guarantee these benefits to the current and future residents of Lockport. And whereas, including families in community tree planting project models the importance of trees to a healthy community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council, Will County, Illinois, an open meeting assembled that the entire community of Lockport is called to join together in celebrating Arbor Day Saturday, May 16th, 2015, in the city of Lockport. And we urge all citizens to support, to protect our trees and our woodlands. So, can I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. Ms. Bartelson, is it Bob, Bob Peretta? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any new business?
Just under May 16th, we're having a clean sweep downtown, Main Street Clean Sweep. I think it's the 24th annual Clean Sweep. It's an opportunity for people to volunteer their time. It's also a wonderful opportunity for high school and grade school kids that have to have community service hours to participate. I'll be down there, and if anybody has to, any community service hours have to be signed off on, I'll be more than happy to certify that people actually did the work.
All righty, sounds good. Thanks, Darren. Anything else?
I just have a question. Someone asked me, if someone wants to volunteer, like a young person, do they have to come with a group or can they just show up?
A clean sweep?
Yes.
Oh, no, to show up.
Okay.
It's all right, no groups.
Thank you.
All righty, then why don't we make a motion to recess the city council meeting till after the committee of the whole so that we can have our executive session then?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Vandermeer, second by Alderman Peretta. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you guys want to take five?
Aye.
Go forward.
Five? You got two fives, one move forward.
Go forward.
That means somebody has to do things. All right, take five. I'm serious, though, man, 8:35. Breaks. Heck. All right, Joanne, you ready? The cash in there?
There you go. Here's my. Oh, what's that?
Excellent.
Higher sticker.
I didn't do anything with it.
All righty, my friends. Now, let's get settled, so do a roll call for us.
Here.
Capadona?
Here.
Here.
I guarantee you, by next meeting, you'll be like, "Gogolly!" You'll be really confident.
You just got Patrakos right.
Yeah.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Vandermeer?
Here.
Haskin?
Here.
Peretta?
Here.
Here.
You'll have that switched around eventually, too. I think we might be the wrong order.
They're in the wrong seats.
Yeah, it's all confusing, yes.
I didn't put the name tag.
Me neither. Are we in the right one?
All righty, going right down to well number nine here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was talking to Alderman Patrakos here.
He's trouble already.
He's trouble already on the corner here.
Every time he gets an idea, this light comes on.
We will have that light bulb replaced.
Saw a light switch here.
I hope it's not the ballast.
Got a thought.
Well, number nine, we're going to talk a little bit about verbally, just about well number nine. If you recall, at last meeting, we were discussing what to do with well number nine. We'd experienced some collapsing on that well. And we were bringing a piece of business to vote on a IEPA loan to put a very large piece of equipment on there for iron removal. We wanted to verify that we could get the proper amount of water out of that well. And upon further investigation, the extent of the collapsing seems to be a little worse than we thought. So, what we'd like to do is take a look, discuss with IEPA about re-drilling that hole, basically, right in the same proximity. But that kind of creates a whole new trigger of processes. And I know I've got Chris Holm from Strand and Amy Wagner are here, if you have questions. But, you know, this Heinz Emerald Dragonfly is a concern in the process. This is one, this is our shallow well that would also be kind of basically redoing well number nine. And I'm sure Chris will have a much better way to explain it if he have more questions. But for the amount of money that we were going to have to spend to potentially take the risk that even if we spend the money to try to redo the same well, we may still have problems. So, I think it's better to just drill a new well, but there's a new process with that. Is that about right?
Yeah. With what we found, with the location of the failure in the well, starting to look at collecting costs for what it would take to rehabilitate that well, back to a point where we could see even what it could produce at this point in time, getting into the $200,000 range. And at that point in time, you're pretty much exactly halfway to just drilling a new well that you can properly and not have more confidence that you weren't going to have that issue. Also, with the rehabilitation of the well, we couldn't be certain that at this point in time that we could get it back to the level of production that it had at one point in time. There would be a much higher level of certainty that we could get a new well to produce what that well did originally on that site. The problem with a new well is pretty much the entire city of Lockport is in this Heinz Emerald Dragonfly habitat area or sensitive area. So, before, we would be too strong on recommending a new well. We have calls in Fish and Wildlife to get some sort of confirmation that they'll allow us to drill a new well to replace the old well that was already there.
So, is this well, then, it's like in the same proximity, like you just move over 10 feet and drill a new hole?
Maybe more than 10 feet, but relatively speaking, Dragonfly probably would notice.
Yeah. Little Dragonfly humor, yes.
On the same site.
Where exactly, what exactly is the location of well number nine?
Well, number nine is at Gauger and 150 First, at Oak Prairie School.
Right by the softball field there?
It's right off of Gauger.
We brought an IGA to the council previously about having this iron removal facility added to their property. So, it's all been pre-approved in the IEPA loan. But again, we didn't want to invest all that money and time for that facility until we knew that this well was going to be healthy enough to give us enough water.
Chris, let me ask you a question. And I'm not a water guy, so that's why I'm asking you. It seems to me that the deeper wells, while you have to screen for radon and that's more expensive upfront, seems to produce better water in the long run. Is that a fact or not a fact?
The deeper aquifer in this area does have radium in it. It does have hardness in it, and those two would have to be treated for. It tends to have less iron than you're experiencing, significantly less iron than you're experiencing with the shallow aquifer. The deep well aquifer in this area, the concern with that is it's being overtaxed. It's drawing down too much. The city of Joliet is basically at an epicenter of drawdown because they're pulling so much out of that that it can't recharge itself fast enough. So, that is the concern with that. However, deep wells continue to be added. Lamont to the north, Romeoville to the west, on the deep well aquifer, not experiencing the drawdown issues. So, we'd want to do more investigation, but the deep well aquifer probably is an option for the north side of the city.
Okay, but it, just talking, you can't just necessarily go deeper with this one. It has to be in the right spot and?
No, there is, we could go deeper with a well outside of, this well is inside a wellhouse. So, trying to drill this one deeper and put the casings in, and it's actually drilled too narrow anyway. So, with this existing well, we can't drill it deeper. We could drill a deep well right outside of this, of this wellhouse, on this property, significantly more money.
Yeah, but I'm just asking the question, man. So, like, if it's more money up front, in the long run, better by having the deeper water? Because it seems to me, just from my experience down the last two years up here, is that a lot of our corrosion, we're going to have to put an iron filtration system on this, which is, you know, a couple million dollars. Is it, is it wiser, just putting it out there, is it wiser to go deeper, spend a little bit more, and make it the best water we can? Because everybody complains about our water quality. So, will we get better water in the long run if we were to make a decision like that?
I think the simple answer is yes. But the importance of replacing well nine with a exact, it is a lot cheaper to, a lot less costly to pump the water from closer to the ground and even treat with iron. It's a less costly, long-term operation. If you have the, if we can get Fish and Wildlife to agree to continue to take 1,000 gallons per minute out of the ground in this area, it's a good, it's a better investment to replace that. But, and that's where the next steps go with this. We think that your next wells are going to have to be on something. We don't think Fish and Wildlife are going to allow you to drill any more shallow wells. You're going to have to go to something different, and you're probably right. It's going to be that deep one. Trying to, you know, just to bring in another system, Romeoville currently has deep wells and shallow wells on the same site. They blend the two water together, and they do win awards with the water. It does improve the taste to have that reduced iron, reduced hardness water from the deep aquifer blended with the shallow water. It does improve quality if you go.
All right, I have a question for you. We have other well sites that have been discussed over the years. One of the well sites was part of the ML Realty Annexation Agreement or whatever it was a couple years ago. And that's in semi-proximity of this well number, I don't know, maybe half a mile away. Does water have to come from up in that area? Or can we use some alternative sites that have, that are on documents that we have sitting on shelves? One was off of. One was off of, I remember it was a, a very good site was off of Division Street between Briggs and Farrell. Kind of over in the Strawberry Hill subdivision area there. So the question is, is if, if we have to drill another well, do we want to drill a well that's far away from the main water treatment sources that we have? Or do you want to drill a well that's closer, which allows us to go ahead and then connect on to the existing infrastructure that we have versus having to put new infrastructure in the ground?
When you say infrastructure, do you mean treatment plants or distribution?
Just, just water from point A to point B.
I mean, it sounds...
It's already there for well nine.
Right, it's there for well nine. I was just asking if you could just go deeper with the hole, that's all. But I, I didn't want to...
Worst case, worst case scenario is the I P A says thou shalt not drill ever there ever again. Then what?
Aye.
Right, and that's where, that's where it seems that you're at with the shallow well. And it's not I P A, it's Fish and Wildlife in this, in this circumstance where you could spend a lot of money. We've already done an investigation of the best place to put the next shallow well and got to the point where we said, look, this is your last hope. And it was down in Fox Hollow, Fox Hollow subdivision, you know, was, was the last place in, in the existing maps where you were outside of the environmentally sensitive area with the, with the Dragonfly. Upon submitting that to Fish and Wildlife, they basically increased their buffer zone and kicked you out of that, too. So no matter where you, I, I don't think you're gonna be able to find a spot to put a shallow well. To actually drill a deep well, you, you pick a spot, you're gonna hit it. It's there, it's down there. So you can put it pretty much anywhere. So the smartest place to put it is in the high zone, which would be, you know, north, north side or east of the tollway would be. And that way, you're pumping it to the high zone, gravity will take it to the, to the low zones. I would certainly want to put it close to the distribution system to minimize the improvements that you'd have to make to, to the distribution system. We'd want to look at the sizing of the pipe in the distribution system.
So, so what's, without putting words in your mouth, it sounds to me that we really need to look at the site that is on the M L Realty property much sooner than later.
Yeah, I used to, you know, it used to be rule of thumb, you're three years right now from getting water out of a new well. Having, you know, it's a three-year process now with the situation in Lockport. I wouldn't be surprised if you're, you're five, six, seven, 10 years from, with all the hurdles. So yes, I, I agree with you that looking at the available sites that you have and starting that research now to see if they're far enough out of the, the drawdown influence from, from the city of Joliet. And to see of, of other potential roadblocks, now is the time to start that investigation.
We've already conducted a well site survey for, I think we're calling it number fourteen.
Right.
So we've already begun, and the M L Realty is one of those locations that could be selected, so.
Well, you know, I, I also think, you know, we, we have these two wells over by the police station that we had the opportunity to fix, but we didn't. And there's water, there's water there. Is that a potential site or is that, that square half-mile off, off limits forever?
Which well number?
I don't remember.
It sounds like they're gonna end up doing something up the north and east anyway, so whether, it doesn't sound like the idea. We'll have to need to look at the water survey of what you guys have done for sightings.
You've abandoned three wells, three wells recently, in the recent past that were shallow wells that I don't think you could ever go back to. I don't think Fish and Wildlife would let you re-drill those. You abandoned two, I believe, deep wells many years back when the radium issues came up. And that might be, you know, those would, I think would be your, they're abandoned, you can't reuse those now, they're filled with...
No, but we can go thirty feet away.
Right, you're correct.
Okay.
To answer your question a little further, two, five, and eight were cap that were done in two thousand eleven. Those were the most recent. Those are all shallow wells. The deep wells that we're talking about that were out of service from years ago would have been Thomas Street, Fifth of Madison, and Fourteenth Street. Those would have been the deep wells when they were having the radium trouble and that's back around two thousand.
Okay.
If they dug a new well at the, the short, the shallow one at the new, at the old site we're talking about, then does the iron removal immediately done at the same time? Or does that have to be, we were gonna do that well as well, is that part of it, the project?
We would believe it would follow closely behind that. You do have I E P A loan approval. To, you have approval from I E P A to use it as a loan funds for the iron removal facility itself. You do not have approval because we, we weren't seeking a new well at that time for the well itself. So we would do it in two steps. We'd, we'd drill the well, make sure it worked properly, and found out what the production rate was. You know, made sure that, that it was producing what the, the iron treatment plant could handle. And then moving forward with the iron treatment plant is, would be our recommendation.
So the building that's there now, does that remain there and then you just cap the well? Is that correct or no?
That's correct.
Okay. How old is well nine? You got an idea, like how many years old then?
Constructed in two thousand two.
So it's not very old?
No, it's not.
That's what I'm thinking, but I'm not a hundred percent with, you know, what you're thinking.
It is, it is not very old.
And so just a little history, we're, we're replacing this because the casing has deteriorated?
No, the, the grout behind the casing was compromised. It collapsed in. And then that allowed material from up and behind the casing to come in. The casing is still there.
Okay, so it's the grout, not the casing?
Correct.
Okay, I was thinking it was the casing. Because my next led to another question, but it's not gonna take effect. I'm, and I don't know, but is cathodic protection into the equation on any of this stuff or no? No? I'm sorry? Okay, not for the piping itself, okay. Thanks.
Real quick and not to speak on the turn, but I do have from Waterwell Solutions, because I know there were a lot of questions about the, you know, the grout failing behind the casing. And this came from the people who actually, you know, looked at the well, said to address the questions and concerns of the city, as if the grout failure could have been prevented with an annual preventive maintenance program, the simple answer is no. There would have been nothing the city could have done to potentially prevent a failure of this situation within the well and/or the pumping equipment. So again, I have questions about maybe when the, when it was installed, what was done properly, and maybe the material used. Those would be my questions. But as for maintenance to the grout, to find the casing, there's really nothing you can do.
Correct. And some maintenance operations may have actually, because of the construction, what I see as an issue might have actually expedited this whole thing by, by putting too much pressure on, on the, the grout that was behind it.
Real quick for clarification also, Alderman, Deskin brought up some good points, but Ben said we did do the well sighting study for well fourteen. We have talked, we would like to get that going. As Chris says, it's a three-year process, so we're trying to budget for that hopefully in the next fiscal year, plan ahead to get that going.
Okay. Well, any other questions for this update? Good? All right, well, Chris, thanks, man.
Thank you.
All right, Lisa, what do you got?
Okay, I have a couple of items here, Mayor. Bond issuance. Part of funding the forty-six-million-dollar capital improvement plan included issuing bonds every other year. So in two thousand thirteen, we issued a bond of about one-point-five million dollars. The interest rate ranged between one and one-and-a-half percent depending on which year it was. Our capital improvement plan for this year is fifteen million dollars. We're looking at going for a bond for about one-point-three million, so it's not even ten percent of the capital improvements that we have. The interest rate that we're estimating is gonna be one-point-two-five percent. So if we're lucky enough to sell it, it's a pretty cheap way for us to continue our, our capital projects that we have. The next step is gonna be a formal approval at the next council meeting to hold a public hearing. Then we'll have to post in the newspaper for the hearing, actually hold the public hearing in June, go out for the bond sale, and then hopefully close on it at the beginning of July. So the funds will be available for the projects that we have that we're moving forward with this summer. We're expecting the bond rating call to happen the week of May eighteenth, okay? So interest is at the lowest portion, you know, the lowest percentage rates that, you know, we've seen historically. It's smart borrowing for us. So I do recommend we move forward with this. We did budget for this to happen. So we'll be coming to look for approval to hold a public hearing at the next council meeting.
All right. Any questions?
The next item is bill print services. So the city issues about ten thousand water bills every single month to our residents. And what happened maybe starting in last November is that people were receiving their postcards and they couldn't read them. We were getting a lot of calls at City Hall here that the print, when, when they left here, they were in perfect shape. When they got to the residence, they couldn't read some of the print that was on there, and they were calling us to complain about it. So I started at that point researching companies that do this bill print service. And in the meantime, we were trying to figure out what was causing it, where was it happening at? And what we determined is that it was happening once it got to the post office. When they were running it through their automatic machines, it was wiping off our print. So we changed cartridges in our print, we talked to the paper company, we, you know, researched all these because we didn't budget for the expense that this is gonna cost for us to do. So we tried to prolong as long as we could. Post office came back to us and said, what we were doing with manually running those postcards, we can no longer do, we don't have enough manpower, you guys need to move forward. So we really are left without a whole lot of choice here for us to move forward. But, you know, at least we got through, almost halfway through our year without having that expense. So the three companies that solicited, that we were solicited for proposals, Subus offered the, their service at the lowest overall price. Also included with their proposal was e-bill presentment. So we have had a number of residents that have asked to have their bills presented to them electronically so that they could save on postage, they can save on paper. The problem is, is there's some overhead cost on that, so I'm not recommending that we move forward right away. I wanna get the, at least bill print up and running. And then maybe once we're comfortable and we can budget for this for next year, we'll move to the e-bill presentment. We need about five percent resident participation to be breaking even on that. So there will be some cost savings to us, but five hundred, or five percent residents, that's about five hundred. I'm not sure that we'll get that much right away. So it'll take us some time for us to underwrite it, for us to see the effect of that. But I do think we'll have participation. Just, you know, it's gonna take some time to get there. So annually, we're looking at an additional cost in postage of about ten thousand dollars a year because moving from a postcard to a full sheet of paper, you know, full-size envelope is an additional cost in postage. And then in printing, it's about nine thousand dollars a year. So it's not extraordinary in, in the scheme of the water, you know, water revenues, but still costs that we didn't budget for. Since we're about halfway through our year, we're looking at about ninety-five-hundred dollars for this year. So we can, you know, assume that, you know, that amount of money into the budget. The companies tell me that we could implement this maybe as quick as June bills at the end of June. I'm not sure that it will happen that fast. But they've done a lot of implementations with the software that we use right now and are very comfortable with that situation, so they think they could, they could help us out there. We did see that the bills that are starting to come back, that people are paying right now are pretty weak. So the bills that went out, when they ran through the post office, post office machines again, did not come out very clear. So it's not gonna be long before we start to get those complaints again from the residents. Benefits. So these bills printed on a full sheet of paper are gonna be easier to read, professionally produced, they're gonna be in a secure envelope, so offer some privacy to the residents. We could graph on there their usage so they can look very quickly and see how much water they're using. We can put detailed messages on the bill itself. So if we want to recognize an event or, or, you know, telling people about, you know, times that they can water or construction hours or anything we want, we can put messages right on the bill for the people. One feature that I do like is an archive system. If somebody calls and says that they didn't get a copy of their bill, we can produce a copy for them through email, through fax, mailing again. We can't do that now. Once, you know, our bills are gone, they're gone. But we have an archive system with this, and we can be able to create another bill for them, exactly what they received in the first place. So I like that feature. We could also include inserts. So if we, if we put an insert in with the bill and it does not cost the postage to go up, so it's, you know, the weight of a first-class piece of mail, it could cost us maybe a hundred dollars for that insert, a hundred dollars extra to put that insert in. So I think we could communicate with our residents so much better, so much more timely about different things that are going on in the city. So I'm pretty excited about that, you know, for a pretty small fee, I think. So I, I'd like to recommend that at the next council meeting, we, we move forward with this bill print and approve a contract with Subus.
Sounds great. Um, just talking, making up some of that money, could conceivably we offer a business, if they wanna pay money to advertise and put a sheet in there?
Absolutely.
Could we recruit some money that way?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
And I, and I'm aware that there are other municipalities that do that, that they have their newsletters underwritten by some advertisement. So yes, we have an opportunity there.
Okay.
Other question, it, it gets cheaper if a lot more people do the e-pay, right?
Right.
When it gets to that point?
Right.
Can one of our first mailers be kind of a survey that says, if anybody's interested, please let us know so we can know if we have five hundred or whatever? I know there's a lot of people that do the electronic pay now, and you'll probably be surprised if...
Well, and I think even on a message without paying for an insert to go in, just in a messenger saying, you know, you know, answer the survey on our website.
Right.
We can put, you know, a survey on the website where we ask people to click, you know, maybe something like that.
We'll do a press release and get it on the web and try to get some, some media to pick up on it, too. So hopefully we can get five hundred fairly quickly. I know nine, they're gonna sign up right away.
I don't pay my water.
Anything else? Do you want an action item then?
Yeah, consent, no, a consent item would be...
I'm fine. Is everybody okay with the consent on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Pam?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. This evening, I'd like to present the first discussion on a fire sprinkler and fire alarm installation assistance program. As the council members who were present at the time might recall, back when we started talking about the two thousand and fifteen budget, we did mention that we were looking into creating what was called a code compliance grant. It would operate similarly to our current facade grant program. We allocated forty thousand dollars towards this line item in the budget. And this evening, we're gonna be talking about the program that's primarily focused on the fire sprinkler and alarms, alarm installation. First of all, I just want to say that the general goal of this program, though it is to provide an incentive for property owners to buildings that were constructed prior to April first of two thousand and three. And why that date was chosen was because at that time, the city of Lockport amended the I B C or the International Building Code to mandate that fire sprinklers were required in all buildings over five thousand square feet in area. This was necessitated by the fact that we wanted to protect these structures as well as enhance the safety of the occupants that would be occupying them. The properties that staff feels would be benefiting most from this type of program would be those in the downtown, those along Ninth Street and Archer Avenue corridors. And this program also, because of certain guidelines that we're proposing, can also be a tool to help improve the economic viability of the same corridors and of the same properties. Because participation in this program not only identifies specific types of eligible uses, but it also requires that other code deficiencies be addressed prior to any fund reimbursement. First, there's sixteen sections, but what I wanna do is just highlight real quickly six of the, of the key ones. The first section, which is the cost sharing. And how the program is being proposed right now is that if someone elects to operate under the program and the guidelines, that they would be allowed up to fifty percent of the approved contract costs for such improvements. But there would be established maximums. If they were just looking to do a fire alarm system, the maximum would be five thousand dollars. If they were looking to do a fire sprinkler system, because there are several properties or many properties in town that currently have alarms, they just don't have the sprinklers. If they were gonna opt for the sprinklers, it would be a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars. And if they were looking to do both systems, it would be a maximum of twenty thousand dollars. Now, the question that we struggled with is, you know, what's the standard average cost? Well, you can't really establish that because each situation, each building size is different, each circumstance with the building is different. So what I anticipate is if this program goes through with these maximum amounts established, that as we, similar again, as we did with the facade improvement program, we may find that as the program is used, we may have to make some adjustment to these numbers. But at least this is a good base to start with, and then we can just change as, as we see necessary. necessary. The next section that I would want to talk about is Section 4, which is the section that requires building code compliance. This section advises that the property owner will require an initial inspection of the property in which all other code deficiencies would be identified. So, that would be anything related to building codes, electrical codes, plumbing, property maintenance, signage, zoning codes, and other fire codes aside from the need for the protection. Any of these deficiencies that would be identified would be corrected at the owner's expense and would need to be addressed prior to any funding reimbursement. The next section is Section 6, which talks about additional city participation. So, in addition to offering this assistance program, the city would also be willing to waive things such as inspection fees, plan review fees, and permit fees, and any other fees that would be associated with the purchase of perhaps a new water meter if required and/or fire alarm system. The city also has had conversation with the Fire Protection District, and we're willing to work with them, and they have expressed a willingness to cooperate with the city because of the fact that these are, are systems that also benefit the district. They would also be willing to consider waiving their fees. However, it would be determined on a case-by-case basis, and ultimately, the fire district would have the final say in whether or not that would happen. The next section, which is Section 8, identifies the allowable uses. And again, this goes, this is the part now that kind of ties into how we can make some improvements from an economic viability standpoint. If you recall, about a year ago, especially in the downtown area, staff had proposed amendment to the use list in the downtown area. And we did that because we wanted to try to get rid of the uses that we really didn't want to see continue in the downtown area, but also, and change some from permitted to special uses so that we have more control over uses that, well, they might fit in, but they might not. And then also, to make sure that the permitted uses were in line with what we wanted to see, the vision for the downtown area. There was some pushback on that. So, I would not necessarily recommend that we go back and try to amend zoning ordinance use district, or the uses, because it's just going to create a whole different complication. However, if someone is, is interested in participating in this program, we're very specific on the types of uses that we want to encourage through the use of this program. And essentially, they're going to be uses that create some sort of sales tax revenues to the city. And so, those would include such things as retail, specialty retail shops, eating and drinking establishments, entertainment recreation establishment, and specialty, specialty service uses which might have a retail component. Now, these are uses that we would support this program for fully. However, if there are some other types of uses before the program would be entered into in any agreement done, the use would have to be approved by the city council. So, there is still some flexibility, but what we wanted to do is identify upfront that these uses, 100%, money available, we're going to support you on this program request. The last section would be Section 11, which is a filing of a lien. So, to ensure that someone doesn't install one or the other or both of these systems, and then basically see that the property now has been dramatically improved and that the value of the property might be more worthwhile to sell the property than to have a tenant in place, the city will be having anyone who participates in this program fill out a lien agreement, which ultimately, depending on the amount and when it's approved, would be filed against the property. So, that anyone who might try to sell the property within a three-year period for profit would have to reimburse the city on a sliding scale for the funding that was invested into the system. So, it would go from if they do it within the first year, 100% reimbursement. If they go within two years, it's 75%. And then three years, 50%. If they sold in the fourth year, there would be no reimbursement required. And again, this is to not only bring safety to the building, but also to make sure that when the city's assisting with this investment, that we're investing in uses that are going to bring value to that particular area and improve the economy or economic viability of that particular area. The other sections from Section 11 through 16 are basically some general, you know, indemnification information in standard language. Oh, the last section is Section 16. Because we want to, people to know that this was a project that would have been funded by the city, we would be putting together some sort of promotional display material that could be put in the window when this project is going on so that people would know that, you know, we, we were assisting with the funding source. So, with that said, staff would, would ask that the council approve this fire sprinkler and fire alarm system installation assistance program, and that we place it on the agenda for action on May 20th. I also know, I did receive a comment from one of the council people, and I will, I've gone through the document and will be clarifying that in each section, it says fire sprinkler and fire alarm system, so that it's clear that it's not, you know, a security alarm or any other kind of alarm, but that it's specifically related to fires. So, I've already started that correction. And then there was another comment too, that architects can do these plans, but also some people will hire engineers. So, that will also be corrected in the document.
Thank you, Pam. Just one quick comment. Instead of the verbiage "within four years", can you change it to "hit four years"? Because the way I read it, within four years, someone could sell the property three years and one day.
Okay.
And it'll get to 0%.
Okay.
I, I just have a couple of comments about this. I'm very happy to, to see this. For those of you on the council, new on the council, about the evolution of this, this, this first started about a year ago. Our, when I spoke with Ben and I then talked to Pam about this, the whole, whole idea was, is, is to give these old properties, which we all want to see redeveloped, and whether it was true or not, I always called the Great Wall of China, which, which was the cost of the sprinkler system, especially with the 5,000 square foot requirement that we have. And anybody wants to put a restaurant in there, whether it's under 5,000 square feet or not, they were never going to get fire approval, approval by the fire, by the fire district. So, within our, within our code, we have our video gaming revenue, and our, our code says that video gaming revenue goes to, for the redevelopment of the downtown. I would like to possibly amend this, that, that, that code to reflect the, it seems to be increased boundaries within this grant program. As I read, it seems the grant program is greater, greater than the, the downtown, which is within our, which is within our video gaming. Why I got interested in this about a year ago is, is I had, for the previous year, had tracked video gaming revenue, not only for the establishments in town, but also for the, for the city. And anybody can do this, just type in, only video gaming revenue in, in, in the, in a search, and you'll be able to come up with monthly, monthly revenue. We are doing quite well, and establishments are doing quite well. So, we had not earmarked any of this money for anything, other than possibly last year, I believe some of this money was used for painting of the, of the, of the light poles. I believe that's where that money came from.
Yeah, we...
It doesn't really go into a pot and sit there, man. It goes into the general fund.
Yeah, we, we code other things that we, you know, if we buy flowers and beautification in the downtown, we code other line items against that money, right?
But, the point, the point is, what the point is, is this is, this is revenue that was coming to the city that we didn't have before. And last year, this revenue was about, I don't remember the exact numbers, about $112,000. My projection this year's going to be about $150,000. My original request was for $50,000 for this year, and my request for next year and thereafter is going to be for $100,000. And we're going to go ahead and we will have this, this, this funding available for these, this specific type of projects that is non-property tax, non-sales tax, and what I call is a choice tax. Those who wish, wish to play, play the games, they will be contributing. Those that don't wish to contribute, well, then they get to go ahead and reap the benefits of these buildings. I believe this is going to be something that's going to really spur the redevelopment of, of downtown. So, that's kind of a very quick synopsis of, and what, what Pam and Ben and the rest of the staff have done from the original idea I had is, 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 is far beyond anything I ever thought of. It's, 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 it's fantastic. So, I just would just like to maybe see if we just match up the, 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 the video gaming revenue with this grant, just the verbiage, the boundaries.
That's all.
Okay. We did budget $40,000 in this year's budget for this program with the same gaming monies.
Yeah.
But we, we could certainly have that deliberation and debate when we bring the budget up in regards to where you folks want to allocate video gaming money to. That's something we can do behind the scenes, but currently, we do budget other things against that line up.
Yeah, let's talk about that, man. I want to, I don't want to just jump right in on that one. Let's, let's think through that one a little bit. But, I have no problem moving forward with the fire sprinkler action item.
I just wanted to say, I, when I saw this, I really liked the, the way it was written. Everything that was on there, I think it, it does promote growth. It protects our stock, our downtown area, the older buildings and everything. Obviously, we've had some fires, so this is great. I know I had asked about, just, at least on the application, identifying how much square footage is on there, just so the board has some idea of, you know, one small building's getting $5,000 and the next big building's getting $5,000, try to make it a little bit more comparable to it. But, making sure that it's, the building's in code compliance that we're doing this, I think is completely well-written. I mean, that's awesome. And then, being able to advertise it and say that the city's, you know, sponsoring this and that's promoting other people to do it and maybe get on the program, I think, I think is a win-win.
All right. Very good. Thanks for the work.
Action item then?
Yeah, I'm okay with an action item. You good?
Yeah.
All righty. All right, construction hours.
Yes. The next item, as council members may remember, we had some homeowners come out and they were expressing some concern with our current construction hours, which are essentially 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. So, our construction hours are currently regulated under our noise ordinance, under work noise. And subsequent to this meeting and the, and hearing what the complaint was with the resident, staff conducted a survey of some neighboring communities. So, we looked at Bulling Brook, Crest Hill, Homer Glen, Joliet, Lamont, New Lenox, and Romeoville. And something I just wanted to point out is that, you know, typical contractor work hours are 7:00 AM to 7, or to 3:30 PM, Monday through Friday. However, depending on a project size or any construction schedule or deadlines, you know, there are opportunities to extend these hours beyond 3:30 and to include weekend work. So, essentially, you know, there's the, and, and what we found was real interesting when we surveyed these communities, is that with the exception of one other community, the majority differentiated between weekday hours and weekend hours. The majority did have start times similar to ours at 7:00 AM on weekdays. The majority have weekday and weekend end times earlier than Lockport's end time of 10:00 PM. And the majority have later start times on weekends, with some differentiating between Saturday and Sunday, and sometimes Sunday even had later hours than Saturday. And then also, some have earlier end times on weekends, with also the differentiating between Saturday and Sunday. Again, Sunday have an earlier end times. So, based on this research, what staff is, is recommending, and especially too, because we're, we're starting to see now a lot more an increase in development interest and activity. So, it's probably best if we could get a handle on this now, while new projects come in so that we can advise them of what our new hours are and make sure we don't have any issues as those projects move forward, staff is recommending the following. Differentiating between weekday and weekend hours, and then proposing the following hours on weekdays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. On weekends, Saturday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Sunday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. These hours would be applicable to all developments taking place in all zoning districts. And then, if the council, you know, supports these hours or suggests other hours, then staff will work with our city attorney on proper language to amend that section of the chapter accordingly.
Um, is there any way to do, like, I know it doesn't apply to a lot of places, but, like, is Lockport Square starting to be constructed? Is not really any houses nearby? I mean, is there a distance that you can say, like, you know, 1,000 feet near a home or something like that? So, places like that, or if, you know, the old technical property starts getting developed, you know, I mean, for those, it's just, a lot of them are further from houses, is what I'm asking. I don't know what the proper distance would be. I mean, I am all for this. I'm just trying to decide, maybe there could be more flexibility for builders if they're further away from a home.
Mayor, that, that was the question I actually had about making it per noise, like, if somebody actually hears it, you know, quiet stuff can be done all time and everything. And I think it was clear to just say, "Here's your construction time", and if you're doing something that's quiet, you can probably extend further back. So, I think it's more on if somebody really complains, like Lockport Square, nobody's doing anything there.
No, I see. Okay. No, I, I get it.
Then you're, you're trying to say, "I, I can hear you from the street", and it's a, it's hard to enforce that way.
Well, and the, yeah, and on that same note, I mean, if you start getting into distance or you start getting into decibels, I mean, truthfully, that just makes more work when there is a noise complaint. You know, are you out there with a roller measuring the distance? Are you there with a sound meter?
Yeah.
Listening to the decibels.
All right.
I mean, just straight-up hours are, here's what it is. I mean, obviously, in emergency situations, there would be exceptions to that, you know, and maybe perhaps, you know, when a particular project does come in, if it is further removed and there's some urgency, you know, maybe there's some negotiation that could take place during annexation or a development agreement. But, it's probably best to just keep straight-up hours so that it doesn't become complicated when you have to enforce it.
Okay.
One little tweak we could do is Monday through Friday, instead of ending at 7, we could bump it up to 8:00 PM. Would be my recommendation, and that'll help out the Lockport Square type of areas.
Well, he's, she's promoting until 10, right?
No, that's what it is currently.
10, no.
I'm sorry. Okay. But, that may affect a house being built next to another house.
Yeah. 8:00 PM, right now, it's 10:00 PM. I haven't had any complaints.
Yeah, 8:00 PM doesn't seem unreasonable in the summertime, you know, to me.
I think 8:00 PM's reasonable.
Uh, what, anybody else have any feelings about this?
For a Saturday's construction at 7:00 AM, you know, being that it's a day off for a lot of people, to me, that sounds early. I could see during the weekday because everybody's getting up, getting ready to go to, go to work anyhow. Could that, you know, is there, you know, a problem? And just moving that to, you know, a later time on a Saturday, you know, to maybe we thought the same time start that Sunday, you know, we start at 8:00.
Sure.
You know, just for convenience for the, if there is residents nearby, because construction, you can hear for, you know, quite a long distance. Just only because on Saturdays, people do like to just kind of maybe sleep in a little bit, you know.
GR, what time do you normally recover from your hangovers?
[laughing]
I don't drink. There's no timeline on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm actually okay with 8:00 AM start times on the weekends and 8:00 PM end times on the, the weekdays and Saturday. That's, you know, it's kind of a little bit subjective here, but...
So, just to recap, 7 to 8, Monday through Friday, 8 to 7 on Saturday, and 8 to 6 on Sunday? Or do you want, maybe we can do anything you want.
Start at 8:00 on Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you said, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 7 to 8, Monday through Friday, 8 to 7 on Saturday, and 8 to 6 on Sunday.
And I'm even okay with 8 to 8 on Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay. It's one of those things that's complaint-based. I mean, if we get, we can always amend it.
The one thing, if you, you guys can check the, like, unions and the work periods on Saturday, just the Saturday ones, like, they may have a certain start time. That's a typical Saturday start time. So, if you, if it's 7:00 and you say you can't work to 8:00, then that kills a lot of jobs.
Okay.
Whatever, union, non-union, or whatever it is, so.
Yeah, we did talk to some developers, but we can ask some union guys.
It's not to shortchange them there.
Does this affect the roadwork too?
Currently, uh, roadwork is handled by, you know, our... Currently, our roadwork is handled by, you know, our engineering staff and our contracts, and I think ours are let from eight to six. Is Amy still here?
Seven to six.
When we have an engineering or a construction project that the engineering department's in charge of, we typically specify work hours as seven AM to six PM. So, our hours are actually more stringent than what the city's construction or noise ordinance allows for. One of the reasons why we do this is because people are coming home from work, and we think it's like better to have the contractor out of the way and having the ramps back in so people can get back in their driveways at the end of the day when we have roadwork under construction. And it also helps to save on overtime for the engineering staff, not having to stay out there so late to watch the projects, so.
With this, if I was a resident, I looked at these construction hours, would I think, hey, somebody's working on the street outside my house, but they're not following these construction hours that we've set in place? Is there, we should clarify?
But we would be, because our construction hours that we set are actually more strict than those are.
Yeah, but not if we, yeah, not if we move it to eight o'clock on Saturdays.
Yeah. We would just have to change that in our contract, that they couldn't work until eight on Saturday.
Okay. Is that a, do you foresee this is a problem for you? Okay.
It may be an issue right now for contracts that we already have under construction that have those hours specified already in the contract, but for future contracts, we can just change it.
Okay. I think we can ask the labors. I don't want to cut them short in the morning or any of those days.
Well, sometimes, too, in the summer hours, they like to start sooner because the sun's not as hot.
Right. Completely early.
Roofers can be there at four o'clock in the morning, whether you want them there or not.
Right. If you have a newborn, doesn't matter what time it is you're waking up, no time is good.
All right. Well, I think the hours that we proposed are fine. If we let current contracts ride out with the hours that you've proposed in the past, that's good with me. We okay with the consent agenda for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Lastly, who's taking the disciplines river bridge?
Oh, well, Amy's at the mic, ready to go.
Already up here.
Yeah.
I know everybody's probably ready to go home, but I just have a verbal update about the Illinois Seven Frontage Road Bridge. If you will recall, earlier or late last year, we had an issue with our Frontage Road Bridge. There was an inspection completed, and the bridge condition was significantly deteriorated from the previous inspection, and IDOT lowered our load rating to eight tons or something. And the Army Corps of Engineer had a project on the canal wall that they were wanting to use the bridge for, and so, we put together a project for temporary shoring for the bridge, and we sent it out to several companies to get proposals, and the proposals came in much higher than what we anticipated, and they were nearly five hundred thousand dollars. At that point in time, my suggestion was to not do the temporary repairs and use the five hundred thousand dollars as our local share and apply for STP bridge funds through the state of Illinois to get the bridge repaired correctly. So, in February, we wrote a letter requesting STP bridge program funds for this project. And on April sixteenth, we received a letter from IDOT notifying us that we are receiving the funding for this project. Right now, we have Phase One engineering awarded at eighty percent of the estimated cost of two hundred thousand dollars. And then, once the Phase One is getting, gets done, we will move into Phase Two and Phase Three and construction. Phase Two engineering was estimated at one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Phase Three construction engineering went two hundred thousand dollars, and the construction itself was two-point-two million. So, as long as everything continues to move forward, we should get eighty percent of all the engineering plus the construction paid for by this program.
Huge. Right on. Big update.
Thanks, Amy.
And our local share for this, for the two-point-seven-three million dollars, is just under five hundred and fifty thousand, which is just a little over what we would have paid for the temporary fix.
Thanks, Amy, for your work on it.
It'll be a twenty million by the end of the year in funding.
Yeah. That was included in the fifteen million.
Oh. Well, still.
Just glad we're not paying her commission.
Set the goals high.
I just have one item, Mayor, if it's okay, on new business. Actually, it's two items. You know, the Will County Twenty Forty Plan is having open houses. Unfortunately, we just missed one in New Lennox yesterday. The next one is May twelfth from four to seven PM at Governor State University in University Park. There's a website, if you can't attend the open houses, you can go to their website and fill out a survey, willconnects2040.org. That's willconnects2040.org. And the reason that's important, to get in there and spend some time to give them some feedback on projects in the area, the Will County Twenty Forty Plan is to be funding the Caton Farm Road Bridge Project, which is very important to Lockport and many of the communities around here. And if they don't get the feedback from the community, we won't hopefully, or we may not get exactly what we want on this project. And having said that, the second item is, we attended a meeting with the county, the TCC meeting, the Caton Farm Road Bridge Project Consultants will be coming to this council for a presentation on June seventeenth. So, on our agenda for June seventeenth, they'll be talking about this bridge and road project and how we've gotten to where we are at this point in the project, so just want to put that out there.
All right, thanks, Ben. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll make a, have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Van de Meer, second of my Alderman Capadona, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Ugly.